Good evening, everyone. I'd like to invite John Tanklage of Maori Khan Vigilner to join us, please, sir. Maori Khan produces the world's finest Vigilners and Ponzu Sauce. They also major, excuse me, they are also a major contributor to the Paramount community. For instance, they donated generously to the College Scholarship for the Paramount Education Partnership, or PEP. In fact, John is a member of the PEP Foundation Board of Directors. Tonight, they are continuing their tradition, presenting PEP with a very substantial $10,000 donation. This brings the total amount this corporation has given to PEP to a remarkable $245,000. John, on behalf of the city, I cannot thank your company enough, sir. This will help so many of our students at Paramount High School pursue their dreams. Thank you, sir, from the bottom of my heart, because of my granddaughter, she'll be graduating this coming year. Would you like to say a few words, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I am joined by Esther Hoxley, our Vice President of Sales, and on behalf of Maori Khan, we want to let you know what an honor it is to be able to support the community in this way. It's Maori Khan's first commitment is to education in the community and making sure that Paramount students are provided for. So it's our great honor and privilege, and thank you very much for the recognition.
Thank you, sir.
So if we can go in front of the podium? You want to go up there?
Up a step.
Okay. The podium is not going to get in your way.
I'll be over on the side.
How do we want? There we go. Can we go back a little bit?
Your usual?
I think that would be fine. Fine.
You want me in the middle or you want me on the side?
You're perfect, Ray.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. I'll take two pictures on two, one and two, and one more, please, one and two. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Now, we return to business portion of the agenda. Okay, John, are there any public comment updates from the city council meeting, sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have a couple. There were two. The first one was Mr. Robert Cruz, and Mr. Cruz was concerned that pets belonging to homeless individuals are not in homeless shelters along with their owners, or they're not properly cared for, and he's requesting that the city work with our local animal control authority, SEAC, to develop a program for homeless pets. In response to that, we contacted Mr. Cruz regarding his concerns, and we also reached out to SEAC and obtained a list of nonprofits who provide pet food and emergency vet care to pets that belong to homeless individuals. In addition, the city contracts with the Salvation Army for their Bell Shelter to house homeless persons, and coincidentally, they are working on creating a pet kennel which will motivate homeless neighbors to accept shelter service. So whenever a homeless person, once that's established, whenever there is a homeless person with a pet, the pet will be allowed to go along with that person. So that's great news. The next speaker was Ms. Janet Maury, and Ms. Maury had complained of lack of parking due to the bike lane on Gardendale Avenue and requested that the city remove the bike lane. Just for a little bit of background, that bike lane was installed during the street rehabilitation project in 2014, and this was done as part of a regional active transportation effort which encourages residents to safely live a healthy, active lifestyle. Staff spoke with Ms. Maury about the potential for creating additional parking. After our city engineer assessed the area, he found that no parking signs can actually be removed from Gardendale Street near Downey Avenue, and there would be adequate space to park a car and not impede the bike lane. The good news is doing so will add close to three additional parking spaces. We let Mrs. Maury know about this potential, and she indicated that any additional spaces would be welcome, so she was happy to hear that. In addition, the city engineer also determined that none of the red curb that's out there can be removed, as these are required for vehicular and pedestrian safety. So with that, that concludes the city council public comment updates from October the 4th.
Thank you, sir. Now is the time that members of the public may comment on items that are not on the agenda. Mr. City Manager, are there any speaker cards?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we do have three. Our first one is from Mr. Adrian Landa from World Energy, and he'd like to come and talk about the community helpline and introduction, as well as Mr. Leor Alpern.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, first, this is the pinkest thing I could find in my closet this morning, but I want to recognize the city of Paramount for recognizing cancer awareness, and every day we hopefully work to rid cancer in our lives. And today's a special day, because, you know, World Energy, we try to walk the walk of being responsible members of the Paramount community, being available and meaningfully members of the Paramount community. And as much as I've been able to handle this on behalf of World Energy, we've recognized that it's also important for us to have a greater presence here in the community and staff that are here locally who have a passion for the community. And so with that, several months ago, we decided to launch a recruitment for a community relations manager. And when we sat down, we said, you know what we need? We need to find someone like Adrian Landa, who works for the Speaker of the State Assembly, who's known in this community, and whose credibility and authenticity and passion for the community is second to none. And of course, we were delighted when we approached Adrian, and he was very aware of and interested in the opportunity, and his boss was willing to part with him, but knowing that he would still be doing good things here in the community. So with that, it is my pleasure to introduce to you World Energy's new community relations manager, a person who needs no introduction for Paramount, Adrian Landa.
Wow, what an introduction. Thank you, Leor. So kind of going off of what Leor said, it's been bittersweet. I've had the honor and privilege of working for an amazing leader, Speaker of the State Assembly, Anthony Rendell, for five years and some months now, and along with that, it's also been an honor and privilege to serve and be a vessel for nine amazing cities, including the beautiful city of Paramount. After having a lengthy conversation with the Speaker, we both decided that this was going to be a good move for me, and that I ain't going anywhere. I get to stay in the city of Paramount, continuing to serve the public, but with a different role and a different hat. As community relations manager, I look forward to continue to work with each and every one of you, but build off of that relationship and see how we can foster other opportunities for the city and for community residents. I don't like to go to any place empty-handed, so I want to do my due diligence and engage with the community directly right here, right now, by letting folks know that if folks have any questions, concerns, or issues, that they can call a number that's going to be connected with me permanently, and that number is area code 562-531-2060. And again, that's area code 562-531-2060. And I'll say it quickly in Spanish. Con mucho orgullo estoy aquí para servir al público. Si ustedes tienen preguntas sobre cualquier cosa, me pueden llamar a la área 562-531-2060. Con un placer y mucho cariño. Que tenga un buen día. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you. We are thankful that you are a part of our community.
It is. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Thank you.
Our next speaker card, Ms. Madam Mayor, is from Mr. Fred Huber of Travis Drive. Mr. Huber?
My name is Fred Huber. I've been a resident since 1971. I've seen the worst of Paramount, I've seen the better. I believe it's starting to turn the wrong way again. In our area, you people say we have no crime, it's quiet. Our daughter has had two cataract converters stolen, she had a window broken in. We had a mail cut off for a week this month, a couple months ago, because one of the neighbors had a dog running loose, and it went after the mailman. SEAC would not come out, because they said no one was bitten. Finally, after the postal inspectors came to our house and other houses, the situation was resolved. They wanted us to put mailboxes out at the curb, so the carrier wouldn't get out of the truck, but that's impossible in a color sack. So then they went and said, the one where the problem was, they put the mailbox out on the curb, they won't deliver it to the house, and we got our mail. Now, we have dogs running loose. SEAC, when we had to, I don't know her name, but she lived in our track, she was good, and she was contracted mostly with the city of Paramount until people got, other agents I guess got upset, and it was changed. But the police, then the party last Saturday at the horse stables, it went from 2:00 until of course 11 or 12. Some of my neighbors called the police, they didn't respond. I called the police, I gave them my name, my phone number, I told them I wanted to come out, to speak. They came out, they were very polite, they said there's nothing they can really do, because it was private property, they can cite them, but there's nothing else. Well, the horse table, that's not private property for them. Southern California Edison owns that land, it is leased to them. Now, I just wonder if the council can do anything to talk to Edison or talk to the stables, because this is the second month that I know of where they have had loud parties with a tent right on our street. The police were fantastic, their hands are tied. I mean, I came here and a guy ran a red light in front of me, there's nothing, they just can't respond to these calls, but yet we have to call them, that's all.
Madam Mayor, could I, sir?
Sir?
I would just like you to know that several of the council members were made aware of this over the weekend, and we're already in the process of an investigation that will be dealt with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we will also, Madam Mayor, speak with SEAC about the dog that's running loose there, and we can check with our federal government representatives about the post office, about the lack, the issues that he is having there as well. So we'll do that. Our last speaker card, Madam Mayor, is from Mr. Alvin Parks, and he'd like to discuss the Friday Night Market. Mr. Parks?
All right. Madam Mayor, can you guys hear me okay? Okay, Madam Mayor and council ladies and everyone, most of you know my name is Alvin Parks, and I'm going to talk about the Friday Night Market. If you don't want to talk about myself briefly, then I'll tell you what I'm talking about. So I bet for those who do know and don't know, I've been a DJ, disc jockey, for 45 years, started in 1977, and currently still a DJ. So just briefly, some of my credits go back a long way. I played for, anybody remember McDonnell Douglas Airline Company? I played for those people. I played for Oscar's Disco in Downey, I played for BoJack's Disco in Lakewood, La Mirada Swap Meet, tons of weddings, tons of birthday parties, anniversaries, and I even once did a divorce party. And people asked me, think of a song that I could play for a divorce party, God was so happy. I racked my brains out, in that time, a group called the Ohio Players, and I played a song called "I'm Going to Be Free." So they were happy about that. I played for the vets, I played for nursing homes and coffee shops, and I've also played in the 80s for three years for Carnival Cruise Lines, I was in their cruise lines. I'd been to Sweden, Canada, Jamaica, Mexico, back in the days, I was a younger guy, of course. I did the US Celebration, do it on Miami, going to Jamaica and St. Thomas and St. Kino's places. And then I spent two and a half years here in, out of San Pedro, on the Tropical, going to Puerto Vallarta, Mazatlan, and Cabo San Lucas. In 1986, the A-Team came on, they filmed their premiere episode of the A-Team. Mr. T was on, George Peppard, and I was that day on the deck, going to Mexico, I was off in the daytime. The producer or somebody found me, and they realized I was the DJ, and they asked me when I go in the disco and play some music for the series, for the TV show, and they got about 300 people to come on. So I'm actually in that movie, if you can find it. They were supposed to be going to Italy, but we were going to Mexico, you know, Palermo, Italy. Anyway, so I've been very supportive of the city for 40 years, I love Paramount, everybody knows I love Paramount. I said all that to say this, Mr. Johnson, thank you so much, I'll be playing here for the Friday Nights Market on the 4th of November outside here. I'm a real DJ, I talk, I play records, vinyl records, turntables, and I have a great show, so I would love your support to come see me. I'm playing from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Friday Nights Market. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
That's it, Madam Mayor?
That's it, okay. Now, we'll move on to the consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, please? Heidi, may I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgadoio?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Vice Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
Mayor Quera Stallings?
Yes. Next, we'll move on to new business. We'll start with an update from Latinas Art Foundation. John, will you please introduce the presenter?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd be delighted to. Our first presentation, as you had mentioned, is will be given by the Latinas Arts Foundation. On occasion, we plan to have a service club provide information to the city council about their organization, and also what their club is doing to make a difference in our community. We felt that we might as well kick it off with the Latinas Arts Foundation, they would be the most appropriate group. They've been truly instrumental with their involvement in many of our events lately, and they have an event coming up in about three weeks, and that's the Day of the Dead event. So with us tonight is Ms. Danalee Perez from the Latinas Arts Foundation. Hi, Danalee.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff and residents. My name is Danalee Leon, and I am the Executive Director of the Latinas Art Foundation. The Latinas Art Foundation, our goals are to empower women and young girls, as well as to provide the community with education and exposure to the Latino arts and culture. Our vision is to recognize aspects of the Latino culture that have shaped our past and inspire us to take into our future. A few things that I'm going to touch on today are going to be our annual events that we have, our Latinas Art Academy, our community volunteer opportunities, and I would like to thank, first of all, the city of Paramount and council for all your continued support that we have had, and the partnership in helping us bring all these activities and experiences and programs to our community. We have some pop-ups. When funding is available, the Latinas Art Foundation hosts pop-up art workshops for the southeast LA community. The workshops that we have held here in Paramount have been acrylic painting, dance workshops, jewelry making, and photography. These classes have been held at Dills Park, Mariposa Center, and Paramount Park, and have been free for the community. The Art on Two Wheels that we have is an event that focuses on the idea of mindful bicycling and expressing our experiences through art. This bike ride started at Holadel Park Bike Path and then proceeded to Dills Park. Mindful bicycling allows us to move slowly and be aware of what our senses can experience while we're riding a bicycle. It allows us to be freely present in the moment and permit our senses to explore the world and understand our surroundings. And through art, we can express our new awareness, our creativity, develop new skills, create social connections, and embrace our identity. For the Paramount Contest, we have taken upon the art contest that was previously carried out by TAG. This contest is created by, is created for our Paramount Unified School District students and residents, who are interested in celebrating their artistic talents and designed to encourage and promote culture, creativity, and individualism. Our judging and our exhibition takes place at the Friday Night Market, and an award is created for our participants to receive the award. This year, it was held at Pragas Plaza, and next year, it's going to be held at the Paramount Community Center. En la Baquereada is a vaquero festival, usually held in July, where we have the community gather and learn about the history of the current and past of the vaquero's lifestyle. We focus on exposing and educating the community about culture through folk dance, art, music, and connection with our, what our ancestors had with nature. During la Baquereada, this festival, we had over 100 dancers to participate in a group dance. We had a horse parade, we have live art, an artist's painting, and we had art workshops, vendors, and a live norteño band. And some council members came out. I know it was the summer, people are on vacation, but thank you for coming out. The next event that we're going to have in a few weeks is going to be our Chantolo, Dia de los Muertos. This is a sacred festival that links our community to their ancestors. It's an event where the community can come together and celebrate and acknowledge the symbiotic relationship between life and death. During this two-day festival, we plan on having live music, performers, catrinas, handmade artwork, which right now we have a lot of high school students at the Mariposa Center working on. We are having a writing workshop where participants can come in, and they can write a letter to a loved one or an ancestor that has passed on a butterfly, since we do see butterflies as messages from, from our ancestors. And we encourage all community members to come and create any art, to participate in the altars, to submit a photo that will be displayed in the artwork, and I'm sorry, in the ofrenda. Oh, we are also hosting a danza workshop free to the community who would like to participate in learning the Chantolo danza. They'll be Tuesdays at 7:00 at the Mariposa Center, and anyone is welcome to take part in it. The Latinas Art Academy is where we currently hold our dance classes, Tuesdays and Thursdays, again at the Mariposa Center. There are classes for ages 2 to adults. We also have our Beyond the Spectrum classes that focuses, but are not limited to participants with Down Syndrome and autism, and in the future, we hope that we have a dedicated class for our senior for gloria. Master Dance Class Workshops, we hold one during the summer, where we host master workshops. Throughout the years, we have brought different professors from the universities in Latino America, where they come to teach our community members and neighbors about cultural dances. They explain the history, the lifestyle, the attire, the agriculture, the storytelling, and how it can be expressed in each dance. The community dance, the dancers perform in the community performances, and we also have, hold interactive art booths. Our dancers have participated in various Paramount community events such as Relay for Life, the Paramount Heritage Festival, the Paramount Heritage Parade, the tree lighting, local performances, art walk, toy drives, grand openings, Friday Night Markets, and more special events that have been held throughout the city. We do have volunteer opportunities that are great for our community. It connects us with others, it builds confidence and self-esteem, it develops transferable skills, and it helps students fulfill their volunteer services. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to creating more cultural art experiences for the Paramount community.
Thank you. Thank you, Danalee.
Any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
Just that I remember when this organization first started and the amount of growth that we had, and the incredible job that you're doing, you're certainly to be commended, Danalee. I mean, whoever would have thought it would go this far? Fantastic job.
Thank you. Okay, next, we'll have a public hearing scheduled with Resolution 22049 regarding the permanent local housing allocation program for this item will be continued November 8th. Have you, have there been any speaker cards submitted for this item?
No, there have been no speaker cards submitted, nor have there been any written public comments submitted.
We have a motion to continue the public hearing. Second, of all. May I have roll call, please, Heidi?
Councilmember Delgadoio?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
Mayor Quera Stallings?
Yes. Okay. Our next item will consider an amendment to the agreement with AKM for consulting services for the water well project, excuse me, Waterwell 16 Project. John, will we have the report, please, sir?
Yes, you may, Madam Mayor. We need to amend our consultant agreement for the engineers who are supervising the construction of this very important project, which is our Waterwell 16 Project. The agreement that we last brought to you for approval took us up to October, which is this current month, and however, with the latest project delays, we now have to amend it to account for what we hope are the final weeks and days of this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, who will walk you through that. Adriana?
Thank you, John, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. AKM provides onsite construction management and inspection services for our Waterwell 16 Project. Inspection during construction is critical for a water well project, as there are many moving parts that require meticulous coordination and inspection. In June of 2022, the city approved Amendment Number Three for AKM, given the delays that had been identified from our construction contractor with regards to the added arsenic treatment system and supply chain issues, which extended the project completion date. Subsequently, we have experienced unanticipated delays with our water well instrumentation and programming, which have once again delayed completion, now anticipated through the end of November. Given the critical nature of this project, it is imperative that we continue the construction management and inspection services through project completion. Amendment Number Four to AKM's contract and the amount of $40,000 is necessary, given the additional support, again, anticipated through November. This was not included in the fiscal year '23 budget and will be reflected during the mid-year budget process utilizing available water fund balance. With that, it is recommended that the city council, on number one, approve Amendment Number Four to the agreement with AKM Consulting Engineers for Continued Construction Management and Inspection Services for Waterwell 16 in the amount of $40,000, and authorize the mayor or her designate to execute the amendment, and number two, appropriate the $40,000 from the available water fund balance for this purpose. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions? Is there a motion on this item, please?
Second, Delgadoio.
Heidi, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgadoio?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
Mayor Quera Stallings?
Yes. Next is an amendment to the Community Prosecutor Program Agreement with the District Attorney's Office. John, will we have a report, please, sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you may. The next agreement is with the county for district attorney services. In the past, I mentioned to you that we were sharing the services of the DA with the city of Bellflower. Bellflower then dropped out of the program, and we made the decision to fund it 100%. However, another city has decided to partner with this, which is great news. So here's Maggie to tell us who that city is and give us more information about the services provided by our DA. Maggie?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. As John mentioned, the following report is a revised agreement with the Los Angeles County District Attorney for the Community Prosecutor Program for this fiscal year. As part of the fiscal year process, the city council approved the service agreement renewal with the Los Angeles County District Attorney for the deputy DA services that are provided by Kelly Tat by Kelly Tattman. Since 1998, the Community Prosecutor Program, formerly known as Sage, provides services to reduce juvenile delinquency, address quality of life issues, combat gang activity and narcotic sales, abate criminal nuisance conditions, and improve community safety through cooperative and collaborative efforts involving residents, school officials, business owners, and law enforcement. Other benefits of this agreement include combating quality of life issues, which include criminal property nuisance, graffiti vandalism, and street racing through intervention and nuisance abatement. Our Deputy DA provides technical assistance to the Public Safety Department, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, as well as other stakeholders. At the time of the agreement, the city's intent was, again, to bear the full cost of these services. However, the agreement was not executed by the county, as the city was pursuing cost-sharing options with other cities. So for approximately three years, the city of Paramount and Bellflower collaborated to share the cost of our Deputy DA. Prior to July 1st, 2022, the city of Paramount received a notice from Bellflower stating that they would no longer be participating in the program. As a result, staff approached the city of Lakewood about partnering to share the cost of the program, where the cities would divide the duties of the dedicated Deputy DA. On August 9th, 2022, the city of Lakewood approved the partnership and the cost-sharing agreement. On October 4th, 2022, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors authorized the Los Angeles County District Attorney to enter into an agreement with the cities of Lakewood and Paramount for a total amount of $289,138 for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. The city of Paramount's share of this agreement is just under $193 for this current fiscal year. This revised agreement will give us an option to extend the agreement for up to four additional one-year periods at the cost of $144,569. A budget adjustment will be completed during mid-year to reflect the cost savings of $90,379 with 33 cents that is associated with the shared agreement with the city of Lakewood effective November 1st, 2022. So in conclusion, the revised agreement will continue to allow the city of Paramount to continue providing these critical public safety services to the community. And with that, it is recommended that the city council approve the revised agreement with the Los Angeles County through the Office of the District Attorney for the Community Prosecutor Program. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do my colleagues have any comments or questions?
All my friends, we were able to, you know, preserve the position, and we've been very effective in some of our cases forward.
Yes. I'm on the item. Heidi, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgadoio?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
Mayor Quaresallos?
Yes. Next is the update on the new Storybook Village event. John, may we have a report, please?
Yes, this is an exciting one, Madam Mayor. National Family Literacy Month is coming up next month, and as part of this recognition, we're introducing a brand-new, exciting children's event. Thanks to our staff in the Community Services Department for continually thinking creatively, and they're the ones that developed this event. So with that is one of our recreation supervisors, Ms. Leslie Arias, who will walk us through the item. Leslie?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I'm very happy to be with you here tonight to walk you through our brand-new city event, the Storybook Village. All right, so as you may know, November is National Family Literacy Month. This is a great time to get the whole family together to enjoy some reading time. Family literacy really promotes the importance of parents and children learning together. To celebrate, we're introducing this new event, Storybook Village, at Progress Plaza, November 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Sorry about that. So at Storybook Village, we will have multiple reading stations. This will include classics, superheroes, Dr. Seuss, inspirational books, and also the good old Little Golden Book series. We will have a check-in time where students will come, and they'll show their name with us, and also their school name. They're going to also receive a passport, as you can see on the slide there. It's Passport to Reading, is what it reads, and they will be walking through each station to receive a stamp. We will have guest readers, that'll be city partners, and also, we've reached out to our service clubs as well. So here is the event layout. Here you can see the whole event in itself. Children will come with their families, enter the event space, and they can choose any pod they wish to visit first. It doesn't have to be in any necessary order. They can go to whichever one they choose to go to first, though they do need to make sure that they get a stamp at each one. Okay? This is a great opportunity for families to also get a chance to meet and greet with council as well, so they can go ahead and, you know, have a great opportunity to speak to council and meet and greet. So what is this magical village we're speaking of? As you can hear the wonderful magical music. It's a fun place where the children and their families can do arts and crafts. They can come and enjoy some refreshments together and some delicious treats. And also, in addition to that, we'll also give them access to photo opportunities. We're going to have a beautiful location with lots of balloons and set up very nicely so that council can be there, along with storybook characters, for families to come and take a photo with you. We will also have book raffles, available prizes, and giveaways. We're very excited to bring this event to our community, and we look forward to seeing everyone there. And that concludes my presentation, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I have a question, Leslie. I think Councilmember Lemmons and I would like to dress up as a character, if possible.
I got Mary Poppins.
Oh, wonderful. We love Mary Poppins.
I would love to dress as a character, too.
Oh, awesome. We love that.
I guess we all will.
I think we all will.
Thought, and it was an idea.
Okay, David.
We're ready, David, for costumes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Leslie. That's going to be fun. Our last item for this evening is the proposed for 2023 city special event. John, may we have a report, sir?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we are in 2022, but we have to start thinking about 2023, even though we haven't even crossed Christmas, or Thanksgiving, or Halloween. We have to look forward still to next year's event. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Community Services Director, David Johnson, who will walk you through the item. Dave?
Thank you, John, Mayor and council members. As John mentioned, we are, even though we're in the middle of going into event season, we are turning our attention towards next year to see how those events lay out and give us an opportunity to make sure it all works, and that we can start contacting vendors to get those going. So we're going to walk you through kind of the breadth and scope of what we do throughout the year for events. So monthly, as Mr. Parks noted, we have Friday Night Paramount. We do the first Friday of every month, except, you know, and there is a conflict with Heritage Event, so that one is usually the second Friday in August, and then the one for December is actually done with our Snow Fest event, so that one is not on the first Friday either. But for than that, they're the first Friday. We have spring events, so you'll notice on here that there are a couple art events now. So at our Friday Night Paramount, we actually now have a date from Bianchi Theater. We're going to do our first-ever Friday Night Paramount pop-up event. Yay! That will also then combine with a chalk art event that we've been looking at doing, and so we're going to see both of those happen on March 17th. The Student Art Show will occur at Friday Night Paramount, so we're actually, Latina Arts was mentioning that, so they're the one that conducts that event. I think it occurred in June this year. We're trying to push it up a little earlier, so it'll occur in April. Our Eco-Friendly then happens right before, what is that day?
Birthday.
Birthday, thank you. I'm saying Eco-Friendly Day. So our fair occurs around that time. And then our Pep Donor Event to recognize groups like Maricon Vinegar for the donations they make to our pep scholarship program. And then we run into summer. So we start our summer off with our concert series. We do combine two of those summer concerts with Friday Night Paramounts. You see the dates there. Our Heritage Festival occurs this year in August 5th. The Heritage Festival, the reason, you know, I think it was two, three years ago that we moved it to August, is this is pretty much when we've finished most of our summer programming, so staff hours become available. And so this staff, this event does, is very staff-intensive, so it does help us to clear some of those events out, and so we have staff time to dedicate towards it. But unfortunately, I wasn't there, but Jaceni told me all about it. This year's event was a very, very hot day, and you'll get that sometimes in August. So what we're looking at right now is possibly looking for that same date, but looking, maybe pushing the hours back so we avoid that noonday heat, and maybe having it go a little deeper into the evening hours. So we're looking at that. The only problem, the potential with that is that we would, some of the vendors may not be able to participate, so we need to check on the vendors to make sure that's still a possibility. Believe it or not, cows have to go to bed, so our two agencies that bring out cows may not be able to participate if it goes that late, so we're checking with them to see how that might work. And then we have our two Night Under the Hay Tree events, which are, again, our cultural events, and the Art Walk, which was very successful this year at Friday Night Paramount, it's back and will run it in September. And then we get into our, oops, fall events. So we'll be going into, this will be our third Hoot and Nanny. So our Hoot and Nanny this year is October 22nd, on a Saturday. We, it sold out really fast, so we were looking at maybe possibilities to see if we can grow that one a little bit, but it is kind of constrained by the capacity of the gymnasium. Our Haunted House has been around for seven years, super popular. All the donations, by the way, that go to Hoot and Nanny and to Haunted House go into the pep scholarship program. And then there's our Giant Halloween Festival, so you can be with your 4,000 of your closest friends, and our Vet Celebration. So the Vet Celebration this year is a living history. It'll be outside again. It'll be at Paramount Park. It won't be the ballroom thing that we've done for the last few years. This is where you get to see living history from, say, Civil War reenactors come out, World War I reenactors come out, World War II reenactors. This is a chance that we pitch it to our principals in the Paramount Unified School District. This is a great opportunity for kids to come out from the school district, talk to these reenactors, understand, you know, a little bit about the history of the United States. So this is a wonderful event for everybody to come out. We have performances on stage, we have a band, there'll be food. It's just a fun event for, hopefully, the families can come out. And then Senior Thanksgiving concludes our fall events. And then we go into the winter events that we're headed towards right this year, but we're looking at 2023. These are our dates for those events, the same ones, the tree lighting ceremony, the photos are, was it 52nd year Santa train? 52nd year? And then Snow Fest. Now, Snow Fest will be, it's our former Breakfast with Santa. This year, it'll be, it's been rebranded as Snow Fest. So we brought back the night sled run, so if you're out there listening, your kids can sled during the day and then come on back, and we're going to sled at night, so we'll do the same thing here. And then we do have a series of cosponsored events, and so our Dia de los Muertos event is with To Peak Sister Cities. We've added into our budget to assist them with the egg hunt area, or our National Day of Prayer with our local churches, the Elks Memorial with the Elks Lodge, Latina Arts Festival, and Heritage Parade, as we've already covered, and then Dia de los Muertos, that she covered as well. That's a huge event. So last year, that was our first year doing it, and she got wonderful attendance, so we actually are pushing it outside. So last year, we stayed within the confines of Progress Park Plaza. We're actually going to be inside Plaza with the altar, so they can be protected, but we're going to bring the stage out into the park, so the event's kind of growing. Will be underneath the giant ash tree, which we'll decorate, so that event's going to get bigger. And I know she had a lot of people contact her last year, it was like, man, I wish I'd known about this. So hopefully, you know about it now, and we're going to get an even bigger crowd. And then we finish with our holiday toy drive with the Women's Club, and that ends our year, and that's what it looks like. I do want to mention, thank you for changing the dates. So typically, I would bring to you a conflict with the Santa train that would occur with the council meeting. Now that we're going to the second council meeting in the month, it no longer provides that conflict, so that worked out really well. That concludes my report. It's recommended that the city council approve or modify the proposed dates for the city's 2023 special and holiday events. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, David. Do any of my colleagues have any comments or questions?
I just, I have a quick comment, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, I was talking to some residents in another city, and I won't mention the city, but they were just like, looking at all of our events that are on social media. They're just like, wow, you guys have like the best events ever. And I was like, you guys are welcome to join us, but I just thought that was really great to hear that, that they, they're watching our page, they follow our page, and they're able to see what we're doing. So I just thought that was a really good compliment to you guys, so congrats. And I think this list gets bigger and bigger every year. I've been in council, I think, since 2019, and I think we just keep adding to this, so good job, you guys.
Anyone else? Absolutely. Fantastic. May, is there a motion for this item, please?
Delgadoio moved.
Second, Agüayo.
Heidi, may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Delgadoio?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Olmos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Agüayo?
Yes.
Mayor Quaresallos?
Yes. Now is the time for council member reports. We'll start with Councilmember Delgadoio.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I attended the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Risk Management Educational Forum, and the workshops I attended pertain to emergency city crisis. I found that these workshops were very informative and educational. I take away that the city council has a vital role in a crisis situation due to the fact that all crises are not the same. And I also learned that the best way to learn leadership in a crisis is to lead. Next, I attended our seniors' treat and talk at the Paramount Park. It was wonderful meeting all our seniors, and I was decorating Halloween cookies with them, and that was a pretty special treat. Finally, I attended our Public Safety Expo. This was a very well-planned expo. Our community came together to meet and greet our public safety of partners and our staff. And congratulations to Maggie, and Eric, and Danny, and Steve, and staff for planning such a fantastic event. I'm looking forward for next year's event, and you know what? You did the best. You knocked it out of the park, everyone. Thank you so much for all your hours of planning, and it was a success. Our community had fun, and so did I. Thank you. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olmos?
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report. I just want to say that I just wish good luck to all the residents who signed up for the Halloween contest, decorating contest. I think judging is tomorrow. Am I right?
Yes, and we have 20 applicants.
Right, so I just want to say good luck, and we'll see who the winners are. I'm excited to see that. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lemmons, please?
I don't have any staff items to report. I want to thank you ladies for holding the ship upright and going and attending all these events and conferences and representing the city. I literally spent almost the entire month either in planning or with my sisters, who came down to celebrate my 50th wedding anniversary. So that's what I did for that period of time, and congratulations, honey, you're the luckiest man in the world.
Congratulations. Vice Mayor Agüayo, please?
First, whoa. First, I want to congratulate, you know, same thing, Maggie and the entire Public Safety Department for, I mean, really a successful first, you know, expo, safety expo. It really was just a fantastic event. We did pray for no rain, but yeah, to see so many members of the community out there, it was really, and they were all having fun. I, you know, when, you know, walking through the area, there was just people at all of the booths and setups, and so that was really great to see. So I am also looking forward to next year, and I know, I'm sure that there's ideas out there already, I'm sure you guys have started talking about, but really, congratulations. It really was an amazing event, so. an amazing event, so thank you for, for doing that for our community. And that, I was also at the JPI Forum, as usual, extremely informative sessions, and their speaker was, well, one of their speakers was Chief Daniel Linsky, and he was the chief of police during the Boston Marathon bombings. And to listen to his story was just, and it wasn't just one thing that happened to him, there was multiple things that just, you know, I mean, that for most people, you think they really would get you down, and he used them to empower himself and his team. So that was really, really just a great, great speaker, you know, that they, that they had. Other than that, I was, I was a little busy. I was at vector control. I actually was the first meeting in the boardroom since, I mean, first, I had never been there, so, and the reason, they're actually, of course, they're talking about a potential meeting in, at their Silmar facility, you know, I said, they haven't really done that, so we'll see how that plays out. It's not around the corner, so, but then again, I mean, they do represent that area, so we probably should go and check it out. The other thing was Eco Rapid. They now officially have a new director, Eric Shen, comes really super qualified and is familiar with the, the project, so we'll be, you know, I'll be meeting him, you know, he wants to kind of talk to all of the trustees and just talk to everybody, and you know, so we get, get to know him, but like I said, he comes, he's coming on board super qualified, so we'll see what, you know, what he has in store for Eco Rapid. Michael Kadama, you know, it's going to be a tough, I think a tough role to fill because he really, you know, that was, you know, I mean, his, his project, and he is, you know, familiar with it, so that is, I think that's all I have.
That is?
That's it.
I also attended the, the first public safety expo, and I'm going to read what I sent to Maggie. I said, "Good morning, Maggie. I want to congratulate you and your staff for an amazing job on the public safety expo event this past Saturday. Everyone was excited, full of energy, and happy to welcome our residents to this event. Thank you all for your hard work. God bless you and the entire staff." So I meant that from the bottom of my heart, and even my husband went, so he was asking a lot of questions. But anyway, he really enjoyed it, so thank you. Thank you even to the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department for being there. Thank you, Lieutenant, for having your, your staff out there, sir. I also attended the conference in Santa Barbara, it was very educational, and I took a lot from it. Yes, the key, one of the keynote speakers was a former Boston Police Chief, as Vice Mayor mentioned. He went through a lot of challenges, and even through the things that were unthinkable, he was able to rise above it. And I went, also attended, right after we came back from Santa Barbara, I went to the Friday Night Market and saw David taking pictures and doing videos. But anyway, of the, of the vendors and the public and the residents being out there having an enjoyable time, sir. And I also, I was attended, I was invited to attend the Compton Walk for Cure by these amazing two sisters, the Suriqa Sisters. I want to thank them for inviting me. I was welcomed like if I was familia, like if I was family, and they were so engaged. I mean, there were so many families there, it was unbelievable. I was just flabbergasted by the engagement that I seen through the community and through families. And also, what Councilmember Annette mentioned, we were able to go have snacks and chats with the seniors, and I also loved going and chatting with them, and they're getting more comfortable with us now coming, so I look forward to having Councilmember Olmos and Councilmember Lemmons to come with me one day soon, and I enjoy singing with them. So I didn't know they had a little music group, so I'm looking forward to singing with both of you, with our seniors.
Well, come listen.
And, and last, I just want to thank everyone from the bottom of my heart and all our directors. You all work so hard for our community, whether it's planning, and I know I called the planning department last week regarding a couple questions from a couple residents, and I'm, I'm learning to give them direction, but sometimes I feel kind of bad, so anyway, so I'll call in behalf of them, but I am trying to train them, John, to call and to be able to take the initiative and call any, any director or any department and ask their questions, because I told them our staff is very, you're able to make contact with them, and you make you feel like you're part of their family. So anyway, thank you from the bottom of my heart for all of your hard work. I'm looking forward to all these new events that'll be occurring, and I plan to visit with my family. Thank you. And our next, okay, now it's time for John.
Ah, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. City Manager, are there any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a few, yes. Once again, you've already said it, but kudos to, to Ms. Mattson, our public safety director and her staff for the public safety expo. It was really enjoyable, and for the first time, as was mentioned, she hit it out of the park with that one, so great job, Maggie. This Saturday, just a couple reminders, is the Halloween Hoot and Nanny, as Mr. Johnson mentioned. Also, Pitchin Paramount, that's the neighborhood just to our south. We've got a lot of good things that we have planned. You will notice, too, at the cul-de-sac at Harrison Street, where the railroad tracks, it's a freshly painted art that our artists painted, so it looks really good. So one of the, some of the volunteers are going to be applying this graffiti coat, so that's what they're going to be doing on Saturday, so those two events are coming up. Just one thing that I wanted to bring your attention, several months ago, or actually a couple of years it's been, we started to accept credit cards. I know it sounds kind of late, but that happened, at the front counters, and with that, we also now accept Apple Pay, Apple and Google Pay for our residents and vendors, so, so yeah, if they need to pay by phone, they can do that, too, so that's it, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you. Good night. God bless. This meeting is adjourned to November 8th, 2022 at 6:00. Good night.